Alive?
Alive? All right. Uh, would like to bring this City of Harrington public hearing to order.
Keep going. One of them is not doing.
You can keep going. The other one will pick you up.
Okay. Uh, so wanted to give an opportunity for any public input on the potential increase for both the garbage and the water rates. Uh, here we go. Do we have the, um... Yeah. I was saying, I'm used to having it out there. So, um, anyway, before we go into acknowledging guests, uh, let's do our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's one goal is to get you to say it right. There is no comma in there.
There's...
One nation. It's one nation under God.
Oh.
There's not a comma in there.
No comma? Oh, I've always said, "One nation under God." Yeah, that's how I was taught.
You went to Harrington, right?
Turkey bag visitors. Peter Devonport. Thank you, Peter. Ryan Pottifield. Thank you, Brian.
Connie King.
Thank you, Connie. Okay, um, so we, I brought this up at the last public hearing. We would like to, if the public has any comment or input on the possibility of changing or looking at the annual increase in both the water and the garbage rates. Um, we do have a sheet here that's been out of what the proposed change for the garbage rates would be, and we've not really established anything specific for the water rates. So Connie, Peter, anything or questions or comments?
So you don't know the amounts that it will be?
Uh, for the garbage, yes, these are made comments.
Well, thank you so much.
What a whole size you have.
Okay.
They do represent about a 19% rate increase.
From current.
From current, yeah.
I'll be calling to get a smaller one, I think.
Okay. Which is one of the reasons why we're actually making this adjustment is because when we made these changes, we had a lot of people that still had dumpsters in town, and the majority of those have downsized.
Yeah. Well, I just have, I just get a smaller one.
Okay. Yeah, Peter?
Just a comment. I should have come to an earlier meeting. Looks like most of the heavy lifting has been done on this issue already, but why is the council addressing the cost of trash pickup when the citizens contract individually with the company?
The reason why is the city ultimately is still responsible for the garbage. We are contracting with Sunshine to do the action of picking up and managing it, and then we, last year, we transferred the billing to them. Uh, it turns out that the rates that they can charge is slightly less than what ours would be, and I don't know exactly why specifically that is. I am lending itself to, excuse me, I think the city's, uh, BNO tax is at a higher rate than what Sunshine pays. So even though we're trying to collect the same revenue, our overall costs are slightly higher because of that tax. But when we did the calculations, and the calculations, I think we were in council, we saw the formula that Councilman Hardy came up with, um, was based primarily on the gallons, a per gallon charge, and what's, was very interesting is the numbers that he calculated for each can throughout the spectrum were very, very close to what Sunshine had said that they could do it for, but those were actually a little bit less.
The other thing I'd say, Peter, because I saw indication of some people who brought this up on social media that felt that it was, uh, let's say confusing at best that the council would be discussing this when we have farmed out ostensibly garbage, but one thing that is unique about that is while you can go to CenturyLink and get services directly from them, and you can go to Avista and get services directly from them, there is no ordinance that requires you to have CenturyLink service, and there is no ordinance that requires you to have Avista service. One thing that is unique about this situation is that there is an ordinance that requires that the citizens of Harrington have garbage service, and because of that, and perhaps there could be a few more things at play as well, but because of that, it puts us in what I would consider to be the unfortunate position of having largely tried to step out of this interaction as much as we can to make it between the private citizen and a private company, but because there's that enforcement of it, we also have to have a hand in making sure that there is a company that is willing to come do that. If every citizen was left to fend for themselves on how to meet that requirement, there, it could be quite possible that no company would want to come service Harrington because a third of the people want to go with this company, and a third of the people want to go with that company, and a third want to go with the other. So it leaves us unfortunately in the position that as much as we've wanted to get out of being the middleman, we do have a part that we at least haven't figured out yet how to get out of in terms of making it available for a company to, to have someone to contract with. It is confusing, and for my money, I wish we could get out of the entire thing and not have anything to do with it, but...
Any other questions? Okay. Comments from our other citizens of the city?
I think it was answered, I mean, it's...
Okay. Okay, uh, if that is all, then I will call for the adjournment of our public meeting, hearing, rather, at 7:12. Uh, and at 7:12, I will open our regular council meeting. Um, and as customer, we do have a slot in the agenda for any public comments, if there's anything addition that people wanted to say beginning of the meeting.
I just want to know when, when, I'm assuming that you're going to have the, the container for our, our yard waste.
Yes.
When that will be coming back?
We have requested to have it be brought back this week.
Oh, great.
So, yes, yes. Thank you. You just saved me from mentioning that at the end.
Yeah.
Uh, any additions to the agenda?
I just have, wanted like the status of our, on recording our meetings, our streaming that we talked about, uh, some, a few meetings ago.
Okay.
We'll revisit that.
And I think this would come under nuisance ordinances, trash on city property.
Okay. Any other additions?
We address the off-road vehicles on the street, so...
You want me to bring it up, or you want to bring it up? Sure. Okay.
Public streets.
Public streets. Okay. Um, after review, are there any items, uh, that are requested to be removed from our consent agenda?
Uh, I'm good.
Okay.
None for me.
Okay. Okay, uh, so we are at the point where we're asking to review, approve, or disapprove the garbage rate, garbage rate increase. Uh, I trust everyone has had a chance to look at the, the rate changes. Um, any comments, any motions to entertain?
Well, to discuss it, we have to put in a...
Yeah.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. We have a first and a second, uh, discussion.
Is, how long is this contract for again, for clarification?
The current amendment is coming up at the, in May?
Uh, end of, end of this month.
End of March, yeah, end of this month. Um, we have a five-year, um, extension or addendum that is at the attorney's being reviewed, and unfortunately, we have not had a chance, he and I have not had a chance to review everything. We haven't had a chance to schedule that, so...
Okay. I guess for clarification, how good is what we're voting on here tonight, accepting or disapproving? How many years is that good for?
I didn't, I'll confess, I didn't read the addendum, so...
Oh, okay.
I can give you the highlights of the, of the draft contract language. So it's a five-year contract proposal with three options, mutual options for five-year extensions. Um, it, the rate sheet is good for the year from April 1 to March 31, and then every year on April 1, there's a CPI adjustment, 100% of CPI, so if CPI is 2%, then the rate increase is 2%. If CPI is 1%, it's, it's a 1% rate increase, um, on an annual basis, so that's reviewed every year at this time.
Could receive it's 10.
And that's just, that is just CPI? There's nothing else in there?
Correct, CPI.
And I think, is that something that we've always, it's always been in there? Or we just, you folks have started?
The initial contract, as I understand it, um, there was an agreed upon rate sheet for the first year, and then there was an adjustment to be made after the, it was a one-year contract.
Right.
Uh, this is standard in how we operate multi-year contracts with our other municipalities, and, and most of them are, are on a CPI adjustment rate, but, sorry, they're all on CPI adjustment rate, and most of them are on a multi-year contract.
Is there a, referring to CPI, do we, do you entertain negotiating a minimum and a maximum? You go, you said 100%.
Correct.
So if it goes up to 10%, it's 10%.
Correct.
Would you be willing to negotiate a cap on that?
Typically, our, our contracts don't have a cap on it. Uh, we both parties to the agreement take, take some risk on the, um, on the CPI adjustment. We could certainly have a conversation about it.
Okay.
Um, I'm not in a position to say yes or no to that, but, um, our owner can certainly weigh in on the issue.
And I don't know, currently, I think historically, I doubt it, they didn't get up to, well, here a year ago or something, they got up pretty high, but traditionally, they don't go that much.
Correct. Typically, over a 30-year period, CPI is around 2.8, 2.9%, 30-year average. Um, so you're going to have some years in there where you're around 1, you're going to have some years where you're a little higher than that. During the pandemic years, you know, that's where you saw the 6, 7% CPI, uh, but typically, you're somewhere in the 1 to 2 or 4 range.
Yeah. Now, my other question, the tipping fee, Lincoln County, when they raised theirs rates, is that a separate, I mean, how, if they raise 5%, which they have raised up over the years, how does that, are we protected in this contract from their raises, or how do we address that?
It's factored into our rate schedule, so your, your, you're just on straight CPI adjustments, so if there's a, a big anomaly for some reason on the, on the tipping fee, then that's, that's the risk we take on, on that side of it.
Okay.
Like I said, I had not read it yet. Is there a date that the CPI is, like, on this date, the CPI is...
It's every April 1. This contract would be effective April 1, and so every 12 months it would come up. And I...
That's when it's published, I think the CPI is published at that time or calculated.
Well, that's when the rate kick in. Let me, yeah, tell you that, I'll read the exact language out of it. So it's CPI based upon the urban, all urban consumer index for the West region, which is just the, the common one we use. Um, it's percent change from September 1 to August 31. So no later than October 1 of the prior year to the effective date of the US rate, um, we will notify you of the, of the rate increase for April, so you'll have that well in there.
Okay. Okay, well, thanks, thanks, Brian. I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, I got, I got any questions, you have.
My god, nothing. I don't know if it's pertinent to improving their, approving the rate increases per se, but since we have you here, I'd like to talk briefly about the concept, and I know during our workshop, the mayor filled us in a little bit on some of the discussions in regards to trying to go after the, um, accounts that had tried to close or had not been paying and that kind of stuff, but, and maybe there isn't anything more to hash out at this time than what you told us, but I guess I would express that I think the council, and maybe I only speak for myself, so other council members can check, chime in with this, but I think we're a little, in some ways, surprised to be having the issue because from the council's perspective, we were trying to, as much as possible, set a relationship in place where Sunshine is directly contracting with people. You, as a company, have the backing of our ordinance to say that people are required to take service, and so we were surprised that there was even any type of a, um, friction over how to go after that because Avista has customers that don't pay, CenturyLink has customers that don't pay. Uh, we were assuming that would be factored in to your guys' calculations as a cost of doing business to either recover or to go after people as appropriate as every business has to do. So it does sound like we're making some headway on coming to an alignment on that, but I just wanted to express to you and throw this out in case the council had anything else to discuss, because most of the time when we've discussed this issue, we don't have the opportunity of a representative of Sunshine, Sunshine here to have the discussion with. Um, but there, there's a bit of surprise there on our part, and, um, I'm hoping we can come to a resolution on, on that, but, I mean, going after delinquent accounts is a pain for everybody, and that's part of what we thought we were trying to set in place with you guys, so...
Yeah. No, I understand that completely, and Mayor and I talked about it a bit, and so I think we both share that communication on both sides could be better, and that's what we are working on, and, and I think we've found a good, um, resolution to that piece of it. As far as the collection of, clearly enforcing the ordinance, unfortunately, as I understand the law, and I'm not a lawyer, so it never was worth, um, we are not in a position as a company to be able to enforce your ordinance.
Right.
And so enforcing the mandatory collection pieces, it has to be a partnership in that regard. The delinquent account collections piece of it, as we look through the list of, of accounts, I think there's a, there's some that where they're outputted in the category of life happens kind of things, and, and those are based upon the relationship that we have, your better knowledge of the community that I, Spencer and I would have, um, we can resolve those fairly easily. I think there's one example of, of someone who's through a family transition, has ownership of a, of a property, they're not actually here, they're not taking other services as well, so that was pretty easily resolved as, as coming off the list. I put that in the life happens category where we, we have to make arrangements there. We do, uh, Mayor asked me the question, and I'm sure this is kind of what you're getting at, too, we do use, have a collection service that we utilize. We prefer to, before we get to that point, try to resolve that at a lowest possible level, so that it's to everybody's benefit if we can do that. For our benefit, we make about 25 to 30 cents on the dollar if you have to go the collection route. It creates a problem for the customer as well in terms of their credit rating and, and the ill will that goes with it, so we, we prefer to try to resolve things as low as possible, as little as possible, and I think we have a good, um, approach and framework to be able to try to do that, but I hear what you're saying, and we'll continue to work on that.
Thank you for that.
Yes, thank you. Nothing comes to mind right now, honestly, but I'm sure after he leaves, I'll have a minute.
I'm sure he does. And I'll leave my card before I go, so if you have a question, we're...
I'm happy to pass email addresses and telephone numbers if that's okay with you.
You have an hour before you get back home, so...
Yeah.
Okay, um, appreciate the information and stuff, and as I said, right now, our attorney is viewing this.
Well, not per se the rates per se.
But the contract.
The contract, yes, yeah, and hoping to have a phone appointment scheduled, hopefully sometime this week.
And just, out of my curiosity and the visitor people and YouTube land, how many, in Lincoln County, do you service all of Lincoln County towns, cities, like Odessa?
We don't service Odessa, but we do service most of your, your neighbors.
Okay.
And so we have a similar arrangement with, with your neighbors.
Okay.
In terms of contractual length and in, in terms of CPI as well. Reardon is a, is an exception to that, they're on a year-to-year, and so that's where you get subject to these big fluctuations in terms of, of your rate adjustments.
I do have a copy of Reardon's current, and there's quite a difference. If anybody wants me to say it, I will, but it's, it's...
In our favor.
In our favor.
In our favor.
To clarify, yeah.
In our favor, we're getting a sweet deal living in Harrington, even though it's going up, but, you know, we're talking some of it between 74 to 100% increase over what we're paying.
But...
You don't have to comment.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have the reason, I'll bow my head, so I...
But to David's point, though, one thing, we've gotten mixed messaging on what we have set up currently in terms of the billing arrangements and the direct relationship between Sunshine and the residents. Is that atypical or typical? Because I think we've now heard this both ways. It, do you usually have this kind of a relationship with the customer directly in cities that you service?
I'm going to answer the question, yes and no. So, yes, we have the, the customer service relationship, so if there's an issue, uh, we're the point of contact to answer those questions. If, if the question is about billing, though, it's, this is atypical, we don't typically do the billing for other municipalities, but we always provide the customer service in terms of miscollection, uh, cart, that's damage that needs to be replaced, those kinds of things, we always provide that service.
Hmm. I guess to my point, and to clarify to the citizens, regardless, if you do the building, or, billing, or we do the billing, these rates are pretty much, there's no fluff built into them on the city's behalf, and whether whomever, you're going to still pick it up, you're still providing a service, and this is what's being charged, so you either write, type out the bill, or the, or the city types out that bill. There, there's no, it, it isn't any cheaper for the city to do that.
Correct, and so what I can tell you about the difference between Harrington and Reardon, so Reardon on a year-to-year basis went through the pandemic, and we've tried to work with Reardon and all of our other customers through the pandemic, because every household and every municipality was hit with a bunch of things financially that they weren't anticipating.
Right.
They didn't experience a rate increase for, for several years as we worked through that with them, and so they're playing a bit of catch-up because you have a, had a contract that renewed or that started with us a year ago, you had a little bit of a rate bump, and so now you have a little bit of additional rate bump as we smoothed out some of the things through the, the learnings of the contract, uh, but it's, it's a little apples to oranges because of the, the arrangement that Reardon had. That's the, the reason for the five-year agreement, that's the benefits you get, is that you smooth things out over five years. The CPI is a, a small step versus a larger step at the end of the term or after a year, so that's one of the things we're trying to help, help work with, you know?
I just got one thing, and I don't, again, I don't want to really put you on the spot, maybe it's not you're, you're not the one doing this, but one thing I noticed in comparison, you know, with Councilman Hardy and myself, we've worked extensively on trying to come up in the years past, and even across the board, uh, so much a gallon, and how much this container, you know, so forth and so on, but I, I noticed, looking at Reardon's rates, that the, the size of tote, there's a third, we're talking 32, 64, and 96, those are the three options, but the rates don't reflect an even percentage, like they're, uh, 32 is up, going up 6, 6.15%, and, uh, their large one has gone up 9.77. I mean, so ours is going up at even 19 on all three. I just wondered how, is that just something, how's that calculated? Do you go by a gallonage or what? I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not against it just being an even, I prefer stuff to be even, Steven, you know?
Yeah.
But all this, um, different variances, I just wonder how that's, comes into play or how it's calculated.
And that's an answer I'll have to get for you. I don't do the numbers, so I can certainly get an answer for you, but I don't have it for you tonight.
Okay, but I just, I figured that as much, and I'm sorry, I apologize. Let me put you on the spot, but that's one thing I do see is that there's differences.
Yeah, I, yeah, as a way, if there's that one version than us.
Well, yeah, we're, we're just a flat 19%, we're, you know, and years past, we've had the, 96 is, I'll just go way back, you know, uh, you figure it out on a gallon rate, now you're paying about 11 cents a gallon for a 96, and I think the 32, we were up to like 25 cents a gallon being charged for it, so I just wondered how they come up with that.
There's a, there's a dynamic that there's essentially a base rate, so like when you, when you, with Avista, there's just a, a cost to even have service that even if you use zero, you're going to pay at least X, right? Similarly, when they go and dump a can, I'm, I'm assuming that more or less, it's going to take the same amount of effort, diesel, everything else to dump a large can as a small can. So there's the concept of, there's the cost of how much does it cost them per can, that's would be essentially their base rate, and then you have the cost of everything that changes based upon volume, which would translate into tipping fees, which would vary based upon how big of a can you have. So when you talk about rate increases, you could increase the base rate, in which case everyone increases the same, similar amount, or you can increase the volumage, which by rights would probably be more applicable to the tipping rates at Lincoln County because that's a volume-based measure. So they could, they could, they could choose to put that increase on either side of that equation, is what I'm saying.
Well, my, for calculation purposes, it was, it was strictly their service, the tipping fee didn't even figure into the, to that, and I was just wondering how, yeah, they're still going to pick it up and whatever, but that's a discussion, don't want to bore anybody, so we'll, we'll move on.
You need an actuary degree to work on that, so...
So you have a, uh, that's the end of my discussion, Mr., uh, Brian explained it eloquently, so I'm ready to go.
Uh, so we have a motion on the floor to accept the revised rates for garbage. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any negatives? Passes 400. Thank you.
We, I don't know, Mr. Mayor, if we, if you mentioned in the minutes, for clarification, we're down one council.
I did not, and I just realized I did not put attendant, or I did, that was a roll call in the very beginning. So for the record, uh, we have all council members here today with the exception of Councilman Meets, who is absent and excused.
So, hence the 4-0, so everybody knows.
Next on the agenda, um... Next on the agenda, discuss and review and approve any water rate increase.
We don't have any numbers, right?
We don't.
So there's nothing to do there.
Make a motion to table that till we get more research.
Some numbers, okay.
We have a motion and a second.
To table, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion to table the water rate discussion. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any negatives? All right, thank you. We'll table that till the next council meeting.
Sure. Or when we get stipulation, till we get the information.
Well, information, yeah, assuming information is sent forthwith.
I think some of the citizens would probably hope we take a long time on that.
Agreed. Okay. This is part of kind of our housekeeping that we have been talking about within our own ordinances, kind of updating and cleaning some up. I had sent out a copy of one of our ordinances, number?
516.
434, which of old from back in 2003, which said that we were going to use US Bank as our Citibank. And the new one was to basically convert that over to Wheatland Bank.
Move to adopt, second.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to accept ordinance 516, switching our bank officially to Wheatland Bank. Any discussion?
This is a new one, or we're just redoing that?
It's new.
Okay, the Glacier Bank thing in this.
They, since we, it's still Wheatland Bank, but after we moved to them, there was a, I'm going to call it a merger with Glacier. So that's how they listed on their paperwork now.
Okay, I'm fine, that's just.
So do we need to do anything with 434, or this just supersedes? Do we need to vote to get rid of that, or?
Apologize?
Yeah.
Let me pull it back up, I had it open and then I closed it.
I think you're right, Creighton, I do not see that that was written in this.
Well, the language in this ordinance 516 should do that.
Yeah, to remove.
So usually, just, I guess, for a point, ordinances in the future, when we're doing this, as we do more cleanup, can have a language similar to actually ordinance number 34 that you sent out.
Repeal, that's the word.
That repeals all previous ones, so that we can do it in one vote. But for tonight, we don't need to change 516, we'll just adopt 516 and we'll vote to repeal 434.
I could write it in.
Two votes will go quick, I think.
Okay. We'll just pick it up as I house clean it up next time.
It is on record that we're going to, yes, yeah, so.
Okay.
I'm good on questions.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favors of adopting ordinance 516, signify by say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Aye, okay, thank you.
I move for repeal ordinance 434.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to repeal 434 as part of this change of codes to Wheatland Bank.
Repeal and replace, repeal 434 and replace it with 516.
We already approved.
We adopted 516.
516, so that's done.
We're just taking 434 out of conflict. Well, ideally, the language would have been in there, but this will just make it so that 434 disappears.
I'm good on discussion.
Just, okay, just moving fast.
Wish you would take shorthand, right?
No one ever said that about a council meeting.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, all in favor of repealing ordinance 434, signify by say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Thank you, 400.
Move to repeal ordinance one.
One or one and?
Well, yeah, we can do it as a package.
Okay.
One and ordinance 34.
Okay.
No, or this and.
Oh.
And.
Yeah. We have a second.
Second, okay. We have a motion on the floor to repeal ordinances one. And I just got to say this dated May 19th, 1902, and 34.
Dated 1904.
June 20th, 1904.
I remember that, yeah. And do we need to state for the record what they are?
Yeah, yeah, just to clarify, they are, what's the term I want to use? They're specifying that the city council meetings would be held on Mondays. And I'm trying to find which.
First and third.
First and third Monday.
At 8:00 PM.
At 8:00 PM.
In a different location.
Yes.
And then both of them speak to procedures for emergency meetings that would be in violation of the OPMA, so.
Okay, any discussion? Okay.
Okay, good.
All in favor of repealing ordinances one and 34, signify by say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And no opposed. Thank you.
You bet.
Okay. Okay. Additions to the agenda. We had a status of recorded, recording the meetings. So this was brought up to me earlier. I had mentioned to you guys where kind of things sat and the cost of the different features and whatever, and it kind of just didn't have any traction on whether it was going to go into further discussion. So I've not put it on the agenda, but we can certainly put it on the agenda to have a discussion and a decision made to make changes.
Sure, I'm not aware of what, I know briefly, we talked off record in brief, some of the options, but.
Yeah, I thought I sent it out in an email.
You did.
Basically was saying that the cost of this was that, and the cost of the other one was more, and I didn't really dig deeper into that.
Though I didn't get time to validate this for myself, but I do not believe that Teams is free.
No, it is not.
I think your email said it was free.
No, Google Meets was free. Teams, if off the top of my head, I think it was 150 something per subscriber, per year.
Yeah, something like that.
And the other thing I liked about Google Meets was that as part of their process, if somebody types in a question or a query that everyone can see, but then later on deletes it, when the administrator downloads the records for that whole meeting.
It's recorded.
It's recorded, it didn't disappear for the public record. So at the time, people may not be able to see it, but it's part of the record.
And you're going to put that on agenda for the next meeting?
I certainly can, yeah. Just need to clarify, when is our next?
So when are we, 12?
The 26th?
Yep, yeah.
Okay.
26th of March.
Okay. And I'll send, I'll redo another email and send that to everybody.
Okay, perfect.
For that information.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any further on that one? I had trash on city property as a nuisance.
On West Glover Street, there's a bunch of remodeling trash that is sitting on the street, in the parking area, but on the street from a remodel project, and it's been sitting there for, I'm guessing, six months.
So not on city property, but in the right of way.
Yeah, I don't know, it could probably, that could probably be debated.
Are you the one?
It's right there.
That's Glover.
Yeah, it's real close to city property.
It's right next to it, yeah.
I'm aware of that one.
So I'm just, I guess my concern a little bit is just, are we in the business of enforcing nuisance ordinances? Or are we just ignoring nuisance ordinances?
No, and I think I spoke to this. We have been down our, temporarily, our code enforcement arm has been limited. So we're back in full force, so.
Okay.
Although this had not necessarily hit my radar, it has now. So, and like I've told everybody, this is one example, and I know what you're talking about, but there are others in towns, so it will be reviewed unilaterally, just not just that one. So there are properties in town and.
And I know this has been an ongoing thing for years and years and years. It just seems like kicking the can down the street with nuisance vehicles and nuisance dogs, and I have a dog, and sometimes she's a nuisance, but.
So I'll dive a little bit deeper into that now, instead of Mayor's comments, if that's okay.
Sure, I'm fine with that.
We did kind of meet as a team at the beginning of the year and talk about the city employees, about what's 2025 going to look like and what's our importance. And that is at the top of the list. So I can't promise that every single ordinance and code in there is going to be executed perfectly. But nuisance is what we hear about the most. So like you said, junk cars, debris in yards, barking dogs, roosters. Cats was the latest voicemail I got.
That time of year, goats.
And I don't know that I'm going to be able to do anything about the cats. But we're going to take the most egregious things and get them addressed and hopefully do it.
And I know that it's a no-win situation.
Well, I want to turn it into a win situation.
Well, I hope so.
So.
Speaking of which, on those lines, how is our licensing for animals? Has that something been going on the wayside here?
It's, I brought it up as an item, and we got a surprising response. So I'd have to get numbers to how many we do, but I see that we get, I hear that we get those renewed on a regular basis, but I don't know how many.
I just wonder compliance, and the big thing we know is the enforcement of it. I just haven't heard nothing about that for some time.
We haven't, knock on wood, we haven't had a big dog issue in the last few months. So probably partially because of the weather or whatever, but.
And we didn't have anything on putty tats, did we, kitty cats?
No, there was no restrictions.
Off the top of my head, I don't think there's anything in our codes for.
I think other towns, some do, but we didn't.
One thing I would, and I might just speak for myself here with this one, but I know I hear from residents, probably two-thirds of what I hear has to do with enforcement, of mostly nuisance ordinances and aesthetic concerns. And I tell people, and I've meant it, that there's a lot that we can't do, that as we've explored this, there's a lot of doors that you would think would be open that have not been open. But as the employees and the administration focuses on this, the message I would like carried, at least from me, if not from the whole council, is that I would invite, if there are doors that need to be opened, if you need prioritization help, if you need resources, if you need, whatever you need, give us some homework of what to try to, like even if we've gone down roads where the door's been closed, I'll go down that road again and try and find a different outlet for it. But in the meantime, the council is in a position where we are accountable to the public, and we can talk about what we haven't done. But in theory, the people who are closest to what they're trying to do and what isn't working and what the limitations are, don't sit in this meeting. So I would say, come back to us to say, this is, we did this, but this is where it stopped, and we need more money, or we need help with this. Because I think the residents of this town have a mandate to us to get this problem solved. And what we need from the employees is this is where I'm blocked, so that we can go do homework and unblock that.
Okay. We can do that. The other thing I was going to bring up is, it's not done yet, but all the relevant codes that you were talking about have been sent to the county to be uploaded to SECUR.
That's a big step.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
Just having the sheriff here to give his two cents on that.
Yeah, and I found out, believe it or not, and I'll have to find out what's in there. But I never knew that this was done, but 505, which is our big nuisance ordinance, that is in SECUR.
Yeah, I thought we had it, and we went through.
I think Andy Make, he helps us do it.
Yes, I found a series of emails from historically that that was done. And so a big part of what we're trying to do is in fact already in there for the Sheriff's Department, so.
Yeah, so we should be.
Okay. Anything else on that? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And that does, to a certain degree, partially address the off-road vehicle.
I was wondering, that's a nuisance.
It is, so.
I feel it is.
It is tonight.
So, because I've reviewed this, because obviously the spring's out, the sap is flowing, and things are buzzing around. So, and I keep on coming back to our codes, but that's what governs us. So our codes actually allow for non-highway vehicles to be on the city streets. They're supposed to have registered and gotten a sticker from City Hall. We don't have that sticker, so we'll have to figure that one out.
We're going to get sticker business there.
Yeah, we'll figure out something. But the other, the other most important thing is that it's not to just go joyriding around the city in your golf cart, mini bike, or whatever. It's in there for the purpose of allowing people to take a quick trip to the store or to get a coffee, or it's basically from point A to point B, back to point A. Not running around. I talked to one of the deputies over the weekend about this topic. He's already talked to a couple of folks in the city and tried to steer them towards state lands to get their riding itch done. Whether that works or not will remain to be seen, but I think everyone agrees that these vehicles that are running around and buzzing around, although it'd be fun, and, you know, we probably all wanted to do it as kids or younger people ourselves, it's just not safe. Somebody's going to get hurt, and then no one's going to enjoy the results of that, so.
That is true, I mean, they're not observing, they're underage, some of them are, some aren't. And that's a biggie. I think there was, you have to be at least 16 to do some of this stuff.
I have to dig into it, yeah.
But nevertheless, it's not just riding them in an orderly fashion like you're driving a car. It's no different than driving your car like a maniac around, you know, it's not a good thing, right? Well, if they behave and obey the traffic laws and do that, I think there probably wouldn't be as much pushback, but when they racing around tearing hell out of stuff, that's when it becomes a problem, and that's.
Yeah, so.
And unless I'm, unless I understand this, just because it is a road inside the city limits does not mean it would qualify for that exemption. Because we have two roads that go through city limits that the city does not own, and are under our control. Our ordinances can't exempt or allow anything. The main highway going through town, and then that highway over there, they are within city limits, but they are not a city road, and that does not mean that people can use.
Thank you, yeah, for clarification.
Public roads. Public roads.
There's, there's no driving these up and down the highways, the state highways.
Public roads.
Including right here.
Yes, third is State Highway twenty-three. So you can cross it, but you're not to drive down it. So if you're gonna run north and south or through the city, you're on the side roads, not the main roads.
It isn't all young people either.
No.
I'm a senior citizen with a golf cart.
Probably not probably really.
I don't know.
I wanna know. I wanna see.
Benford Golf.
Okay. Observe the check register as it was already approved. Any questions?
Was there anything added to it?
No. So, and then, just go ahead.
Uh, nothing. Is the minutes, did we?
That's in the consent.
Yeah, okay, that's what I.
I moved the adoption of the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have the first and the second to adopt the, to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion?
None here.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any negatives? Alright. Thank you.
Um, how long do we have under temporary provision? When do we need to make that consent agenda?
Probably, uh.
Next meeting?
Take a look at that and, yeah.
Okay.
Just add that to the next agenda.
Please.
Ordinance or resolution?
It would need to be an ordinance, yeah.
I would have thought the same, but I just wanted to double check. Right. Mayor's comments. Uh, we've hit a lot of the stuff I was gonna bring up. I've only got two things. One is kind of a notification. We've talked about the hot water and the problems of getting it at Memorial Hall. They came to a head this week and they got fixed this morning, so. On Monday, I was being told that there was barely any hot water coming out of the, the tap into Memorial Hall. And I picked up a new hot water tank and it got installed this morning. After I got, fortunately I had it because I got a phone call not two minutes after I told Public Works that they were gonna get it installed because there was now no hot water. And yes, I know where you're going with that. The bid was twelve grand. And I loved what our cost was for the boiler inspection and it wasn't, it's not a number. It's, I don't even think it's a hundred bucks.
Oh, well, that changes that equation a lot. For all of them?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, I, and I'm sorry, I didn't bring that up, but that was the, like, okay, that's a, that's an economic decision.
Did you tell him about?
Yeah, and they saw it.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's, if it's not already fixed, it's getting fixed.
Okay.
Yeah.
We haven't died over there yet.
If the whole line is, but falls asleep during the next meeting.
I'm gonna be there, so.
Night, night.
Okay, uh, the other thing that happened today was we had, we opened, or received and opened bids, C O bids for our wastewater treatment plant provision. We had three people there. And I don't know how much I wanna go into it, but, uh, the lowest bid was homey construction at a rate of just over two million. The, which exceeds the amount of money that we have to finish that up. So there's a couple of things that are immediately getting put into action. One is, after that meeting, I had a conversation with the engineer, which is new. They are looking at some of the features of the existing plan. And they're looking at possibly eliminating some of them that may be overkill. So right now, our aeration pond, if you will, that has always been felt like it's probably overkill and probably not needed. And so they're gonna see if ecology will let us take that completely out of the equation. Cause that, according to the bid breakouts and all the rest of it, represented a very, very healthy chunk of that bid. The other thing is simultaneously, we're checking to see if there's more grant money from ecology to pay for the difference.
It wouldn't be the first time. We've had, what, at least one road, maybe two roads come in with a bid higher than the amount of the grant? And then the state made up the difference. So we've been here before a little bit.
The, the hope, I mean, the, the ultimate hope would be that we, the money just falls out of the sky and we can just move forward. But there was a small window of time. And if we have to reject all bids because they're all too high, then that's what it is. And we start over again with a new plan.
If, if they could still use that pond, would we have, could we just drop that part out of the bid? Or do we have to have new bids submitted then?
Or any bids?
Probably new bids.
I would, I'm guessing new bids too.
I think if the plan changes.
Then we'd have new bids.
To, to that extent, I think, the dollar figure, it would have to be rebid.
Yeah.
Guessing.
You just can't cross that section now.
Yeah, yeah.
Line item.
Can on paper.
So.
I mean, generally less is, good, a simpler system is, is great. I guess the only thing that makes me a little queasy is we know the progression and direction of the state government. I wanna make sure that whatever they would do would still be, have a reasonable degree of future proofness. Because the, the Olympia is not likely to get more permissive on ecological concerns. And so if they get rid of something that is okay today, but next year all of a sudden, oh, you don't have a provision for this? Well, you must da, 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 da. Well, where's that money coming from? Well, we don't have it, sorry, but you're still.
Is, is this a correct statement, Mr. Mayor? That this project has been in the works for like five years or, or some time, a period of time? And that, that the holdup was the state held this up and in turn drove up the costs to do this.
This, I've seen comments about this starting in two thousand seventeen.
Yeah, so it's been more than a few years.
Between just the scope of the, the planning and the engineering, COVID did not help. And then, yes, once it was done, uh, certain departments of the state government are poorly manned at the, this point. So getting these approved has taken longer and longer and longer. So yes, we got money from the state allocated based on two thousand eighteen dollars. And obviously earnings massively changed.
I guess for the record, for everybody to understand, it wasn't the council or the mayor's, um, uh, problem. Or they did not cause this.
No, you're, you can't pin this tail on any of the past administrations.
Cause we diligently did our part, what they asked, and it was held up in Olympia.
So, or wherever the people are, but yeah, that's basically it. Just, it's kind of a force majeure kind of thing, so. So anyway, the goal is to still get things cleaned up and updated down there. Personally, I'm okay with them taking that aeration pond out of it. It's also referred to as a settling pond. Because quite honestly, those motors that run the aeration, they're not cheap and they do not have a long lifespan and they're about ten grand a piece. They're expensive to have there, not to mention the amount of electricity that they burn day in and day out. Cause they run twenty-four seven.
No, I'd love to get rid of it, just as long as we don't leave ourselves vulnerable, but that'd be great.
Understanding is that our wa- well, I think it's proof that the, the wetlands that are down there.
Yeah.
Are technically man-made and that's part of our system. They refer to it as the weak, leaky wetlands. It's designed to go in there and then from there it goes out into Mother Earth. That place is flourishing with birds and turtles and.
Ducks.
It's obviously a very healthy environment. So I know that the, the affluent that is leaving and getting into that point is about as clean as it gets. No, I'm not gonna go drink it, but.
But environmentally speaking, it's.
Environmentally speaking, yeah. I'm also going to be, this is an exploration, so this is kind of the first time I'm throwing this out there. Uh, cause I don't even know if I can do this. But I'm exploring the option of possibly using that water that goes in there to irrigate and keep green all the area around it, if it's allowed. So, I mean, we could never take more out of it than's coming in. But if we could use that water to just keep the grass green and the trees green and whatever in that area, it's a win-win.
Think it's possible, cause Stamport waters hay ground with their.
Do they?
Yeah.
And a lot of states in the southwest have explored use, secondary uses for wastewater, so.
So if we can do that economically and ecologically, I'd like to go for it, so.
That's fire danger, yeah.
And I'm sure there's more I could ram along on that, but that's all I got.
Okay, well, this time I'd like to, uh, on behalf of the council, thank our guests, visitors today. Thank you for coming. It's, I personally appreciate it. And I think it's council in general appreciate your, appreciate your input, so thank you.
Page two doesn't show on here, but before you go, Stephen, um, any public comments? There's another opportunity for any kind of public comments. Any other questions or things you'd like to add?
I don't know if this is when I should say this, but what are the expectations of the city for having pine, pine needles and pine cones and leaves under trees there all the time? It, I mean, to me, it seems like it's a fire prob- you know, if there was a fire, it would be, it shouldn't be sitting there so much.
Is this on city properties or just in this, throughout the city?
No, it's.
The park?
No, no, it's next to my property.
Okay.
And both, on both the sides of my property, there are tall, tall trees.
Okay.
And under one side, um, there's a lot of stuff that's left underneath there that could be a fire thing. But, but of course, the trees could be bad for fire too. So maybe that's not it. I mean, I know it's something that probably is, um, that you don't deal with.
It has admittedly not come up as a topic before.
It has, on that same property.
Yeah.
So you know the property in question? Is it, it's not city property?
No.
Okay.
It's not?
Not between your, not between the two lots. That isn't city property. Yours goes up to your property line and then I'm assuming it's south of you.
That way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Also, it's not city.
That's not city property.
Under the trees.
No.
Oh, I didn't know that. Oh.
They're your trees and your neighbor's trees.
Not my trees.
Well, then they're your neighbor's trees.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I, I do know, this might be off so, color a little bit, but we used, I know the school years ago and we've talked about it, this community cleanup days and stuff for people that elderly or whatever, that went around and, and cleaned up the community, kind of, uh, as a goodwill gesture. I know myself, uh, junior high, we, we did that for the people. The school got out and, uh, well, I think they, you know, way to earn a few shekels, few, few dollars cents for whatever. And the kids would go around to different places. They'd sign up on a list and hey, I got this to do, so we'd go help them out and stuff. I don't know if the community is together enough to implement a program.
Sure if he just likes it that way.
Well.
Can only ask.
Yeah, and I need to do that. I haven't done that.
That would be, I would suggest the first thing you do, whether you'll get anywhere or not.
Right.
But I would suggest you ask him first.
Yeah, I can do that.
Just as a courtesy, and, and I've heard about other communities having the cleanup day. And, and I like that idea and it's just a matter of bandwidth, so if somebody wants to.
And the, I know like when they come down for fall fests and stuff, I believe this, the kids are on city property, city sidewalks, city streets. When you cross the line into getting into private property, that's probably in a different liability profile for the school. I wouldn't doubt if there is more revocation about getting onto private property, do that kind of stuff. But the other thing is, and this is not the first time of fire assertion, but especially as it relates to two private parties. The entity in town that would be best qualified to make an assertion of a fire danger would be to talk to the fire district. Either the commissioners or the chief would be someone who could give a better assertion of whether something constitutes a, a real fire danger. I, I know even there's been some things since I've joined the fire district stuff that I thought would be more dangerous. And sometimes they've said, oh, that's not a big deal, cause when you turn all the water on it, it's just gonna. And then there was other things that I didn't think would be a big deal that were. So if, the people who would have to actually fight the fire should probably be the ones that would be primarily consulted on whether it's a problem.
Alright, alright, thank you.
I can give you their names.
Steve can too.
Okay, with that in mind, do you have any comments from the council, including a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion.
Then we'll get trained on the board here someday.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.